We need a big school now. I know, and you know, like the last one I go, we had a classroom, the carpet, and it would like three classrooms. Something that... Maybe they have more rooms we have, and they can do. If they're not in this meeting, we see a less lack of meeting, they didn't mention anything about it.
At this time, thank you for your input. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is the states and the nations of this world. All in this moment, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of this great and sovereign country, and to the citizens of this free, democratic, and healthy, democratic, 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 yeah, we need a big school now. I know, and you know, like the last one I go, we had a classroom, the carpet, and it would like three classrooms. Something that... I don't think they're able to do it. Maybe they have more rooms we have, and they can do. If they're not in this meeting, if we see a less lack of meeting, they didn't mention everything about it.
At this time, thank you for your input. Thanks for having me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
All right, I need you to vote for the adoption of your gift.
I'll make my vote.
Can you make some votes, you got a second?
Please.
Three seconds. Voice vote?
Yes, yes.
Doctor Chandler?
Yes.
If your vote heads, vote passes. At this time, we have, let's go to the con- conceal items. Ah, I'm kidding. I'm sorry, K, K. Consider approve the option to change from RSA advisor from LSC to Compass Municipal Advisor. Now these gentlemen, I understand have a three-hour drive, so we want to let them do a little presentation, so they can get back on soon.
Well, then we're prepared for pretty tight and articulate, so we're going to leave you out here. Your financial advisor, can you confirm what the differences are per that and what you offer to them?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Superintendent, members of board, my name is Anthony Strong. I'm vice president of business development for Compass Municipal Advisors. With me tonight is Tim Spencer, who also works at business development, and Michael George is our managing partner for our firm. Essentially, we are a full-service financial advisory firm, similar to what you had used in the past with the previous company that you've been using. As I shared with superintendent earlier, back during the summer, and a couple other board members, and some things we've done in presentation. Our basic concept that holds us different than the other firms that do this in the state is that we form more of a partnership with the board in terms of doing capital planning. A lot of times in the role of a fiscal agent, basically, is very transactional. You need to build a new school, or you need to do a renovation, and you ask the fiscal agent, how much bond capacity do you have? And they give you that number, and if you have enough money to do that, can you move forward with the project? If you don't, you can't. In our approach to do it, and we are more of a strategic partner in terms of working with them. So when we work with the district, and what we would do when we came in here would be to work with superintendent, finance officer, depending on how the board wanted to interact with a team, possibly one or two board members, or just one board member, and we would work with your staff to develop a plan based upon, one, the combination of the goals and objectives of the board in terms of facilities, and working with your district facility plan. So that's the way that we look at how we are different. In the past five years, in terms of where we are operating, first of all, we operate, we do about 90% of the school business in the state of South Carolina. We operate in almost all 120 counties in the state. Most of our Kentucky business about five years ago had been mostly cities and county government and other tax districts. We just kind of, we had one school district about five years ago. If we sign you up this evening, we'll have 26 school districts. So we picked up 25 districts in the last five years. We've had many of them that Mr. Shaw works with because he's approved our contract multiple times in terms of reviewing that. But we feel like our program is different. You have me as a former superintendent, and as I tell our boards and people, you know, my role is, is that I have been one of the five of you in superintendent set finance officer. That is a different understanding than just the financial aspect of it. So whenever we come to a board in person, or we share information, we make sure that we have, making sure that our presentation is something that is more talk and more language so that, you know, you understand from our side. Because most board members and superintendents are not like financial people, like Mr. George is. So with our approach, when we work with you, you know, you'll have myself, you have Mr. George. Mr. George will work with the numbers, share the information, put that piece together, work with your finance officer, and he and I would help work in terms of making that presentation to the board in terms of what you're doing. You do have a contract in front of us. One of the things that the businesses, introductory offer, the fees that we charge are set by the state, just like your architectural fees are predetermined. But we do have the ability to offer discount. In this contract, we have included a 25% discount on this fee schedule for you on your first bond issued. And the other thing that I've shared with board members is that, you know, this is, we're not asking you to sign a long-term contract. A lot of agencies want you to do a two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year type deal. We're pretty confident in what we do. So our contract has 30-day out, so, you know, if you were to hire us tonight, a week from now you don't like this. Give us 30 days. We don't think you will do that, because we think you don't like what you're getting. But, you know, we want to be here because you want us to be here. So happy to answer any questions that you might have about...
I have a question.
Yes?
What the difference between you and one we have right now?
Well, essentially, as I was saying, is I think in our situation is, is that we are more of a strategic partner rather than transaction. So, you know, I like, maybe I use it in your example in the medical field, you know, I'm a doctor that's going to work with me and explain things to me in partnership with me in terms of what we're doing, not just come in and tell me you need to take this medicine, or you need to do this particular thing. So that's our approach different from what the other firms basically do in my experience. And I can say that because in my role as superintendent, 14 years, I've used the firm that you're currently with now. And then when I retired, went to work, I went to work for Compass.
So, we signed you guys tonight. How often will you come back?
Well, if you throw things at me, I'm not coming back often.
Gee, must be...
Well, what we try to do, and it's a good question, is that we want to tailor the effort in terms of presence with the board to fit our needs. If you're doing multiple projects, and you've got a lot of things, boy, you're going to see outside here more often. At the least, we like to base upon the request of superintendent officer to come once a year and update you on your bond capacity, where you are on your debt service. Because alone is not just selling bonds for future projects, we also monitor and maintain the records, follow the records on existing bond issues. I know back in March, you had a presentation from your current company about the potential of refinancing. So that's something that we do as well. And that's something that, you know, we would probably be back very soon to pick back up and work with you on that. Currently, that's something, I mean, that, I think you took action, but the ability to do that refinancing step is not something that's available right now. You know, not knowing the market and interest rates, it'd be hard to, you know, determine that. So probably what we would come back, probably very soon, is after we review it some more, just come back and do a different resolution, us being the one that's doing that. So when you have it out, we'll be able to...
Some has heard this, some haven't. Probably getting tired. I've been here four and a half years, and I've seen it one time. And I'll never understand all the financial, but it would be nice to have that, that's for you.
Well, another thing too, is that we're very active in your association with school board. We're always at the summer and the winter conference, always there at the annual meeting, always there presenting. So, you know, you will have access to my phone number and to Mr. George's number, superintendent finance officer. And, you know, anytime that you have any questions, I will say this, I treat my board members that I've worked with with Compass the same way, I treat my board members by superintendent. If you call me, I'm going to answer the phone, and we're going to work with you and try to make sure you get the information that you need.
I want a question. The interests laid will be going to... The interest rate will be going to drop pretty soon. Interest rate going to drop pretty soon, so we can rewrite our bonds?
Depending on the issue and the timeframe of it, normally, bonds are recalled by the ten-year mark. So, what we would do is look at all the bonds that you have. If you got to a period of time where they can be refunded, then we would work with you on that. And if it's a situation where the interest rates has dropped, you can save some money on that, then we would recommend that to you. There's an amount, a threshold amount that the state requires to be able for you to meet that before we could do this. So, that's something that we would continually monitor with all of your debt service that you have.
I have a question.
Yes.
Which one is Mr. George?
Right here.
Okay. And Mr. Spencer, okay.
The twenty-five percent on the first bond, and she was sitting in this contract.
Yeah, it should be down toward the bottom, but. It's in the first page, isn't it?
First page.
It's second three.
Second three.
Second three, page four. It's the first, second, second paragraph.
It explains it, page four is me.
Yeah, I've got a copy.
It goes from three to five, so that's why.
No, you're right. This is the, this is. This is the state we feel, and we added this language on the twenty-five.
Okay, well, mine was from three to five, that's why. So, here's this next page.
Mr. Shaw, with the fact that you've given all of Kentucky to South Carolina, that's for a long. Possibility to have someone from South Carolina.
Yes, but because of the volume that we do and the percentages that we have in South Carolina, you know, in the state of Kentucky, most bond issues when they go to sale, typically, they'll run somewhere, it's a Kentucky school bond, probably, you know, three to four bidders or interested participants. With the volume that we do, including South Carolina, average, most of our, we will have more than six people bid on that. So, we do have the ability, because of the size of the firm, to attract more bidders almost as far as. Okay, thank you, good question.
Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna take that. Thank you very much for your presentation. Do you guys have anything?
No, we're happy to answer any questions, any other questions you want to have. Thank you all.
Do we have to do it all, or do you pay?
Yeah, that's always considered. If we can make a budget to do them all, if you want.
If any, he's not here, leave it to us, huh?
Uh, she's seen it, I've seen it to her, she's seen it. She's been seen, she's been out for about a week. And that was her first time back, so she's still not feeling well.
So, she's sick, or she?
I assume, she didn't tell me why she wouldn't be here tonight, but she's been out for a longer week.
And she is more than a breath. Santa.
She already did, what?
The only question that I had was about the age two, that's probably considered a five.
I think that's a typo, it's grade two.
Yeah, that's the only thing that makes it, age two, seven.
I'm sure. It's gonna be grade two through Santa, I guess.
Well, I'll make a motion to be accepted, Santa.
He made a motion, and he made a motion to approve six A through sixteen.
Thank you.
Steve Seggs, boys vote?
Yes, yes.
Doctor Kendra?
Yes.
Yes.
Your vote, yes, all city items have been approved.
Thank you, appreciated, and I will reach out to Superintendent. We'll get a time set up to do that. Once, once you have a chance to get the school started and all those.
That's fine. We actually have a special call meeting on September second, where our LPC will actually be officially approved, and we'll know more about our projects and what we need to do for bonds. So, if you all would be available to meet with us after that date, that would be great.
There.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Be careful going on.
I know, I'm fifty minutes away.
Okay. Good work you have, thank you.
I'm not fifty, fifty seconds, so I'm not too far away.
Not be speaking now.
Absolutely not.
Is the one year. Did you ever know a guy named Bucky Evans?
Bucky Evans, I do not.
Evans?
Evans, oh, yeah, he was a.
Principal of the.
Great deal, little man.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know Bucky.
Don't tell him.
I don't think anybody that is. And I'm just curious if Mr. Paulwood, there in my class, committed big county ties. There are several Paulwoods there in Benton County.
They keep him out, so he's not.
Thank you all. I'll see you. Take care, thank you all.
All right, number two, special reports and spotlight, all we have there.
First of all, good evening. Special presentation make for Mr. Kyle Ullman. He is a teacher at Floyd Central High School. Recently, he has been inducted as a member of Co-Works Four of the Generation Citizen Teacher Leadership Board. Generation Citizen is governed by awarding directors and includes current and former leaders of some of the country's most innovative nonprofit organizations, businesses, and educational institutions. The Teacher Leadership Board, or TOB, is comprised of Generation Citizen Program teachers representing GC's regional program sites. The Teacher Leadership Board elevates the vital voices of teachers in the growing movement to expand access to high-quality, community-based citizens education across the country. I will say this, I've worked with Mr. Ullman. He's a fine person. He knows his stuff, he's a very good citizens teacher. He asked me to say he's better than his brother, but I won't do it, just because his brother's here, and I don't want to get that family feud started. But I can honestly say that no, no other teacher that I know in the realm of civics can touch this man. He's, he's not only a colleague, he's a brother, and he's a friend. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Kyle. People come in, and the board will come around, will participate by technical. I want to have you all over to take a picture.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you, wants to have your picture up there. Yes, oh, yeah.
Go ahead, you're good.
All right, let's see, Mr.. All right, all right. We had to convince some of the technical.
My third grade. Watch me fall, no fall. Be careful. I had it for third grade. She fell every place.
I also.
He need help, he need.
Yeah, okay.
I told her she need to change her name, but.
I know, she need the big one too, I saw that too. I was thinking the same thing.
So, last year, we ordered a yearbook, it had all, it had all of our schools in it. We only sold four hundred and some, around five hundred and twenty. And we had purchased seven hundred. So, you're looking at a big price, that's fifty-seven dollars per yearbook. And we're looking at that same price again this year. The committee man, the superintendent brought the committee together to look at some different choices. And one of the things we found that this group offers is we can do a hardback, a hardback yearbook that Superintendent has around there. It would have a hundred pages. That means that seniors could have a quarter of a page each. And with expanded, with expanded space for activities, that all, all kinds of good stuff, we could put, you know, pants on the back, however we need to do it. The elementary schools would have a paperback version. It will also have a hundred pages. But this would drop the price for a high school book by twenty dollars. And it would drop, well, twenty, right around twenty dollars. And it would drop the elementary school book by like forty-five dollars. So, or twenty-six. So, we wanted to make this optional where to be announced. Of course, we're not on the agenda, and I think we can really make equal study. We should be aware of what we've got.
So, basically, we have about five hundred students that purchased out of five thousand the current book that we had.
Yes.
And we're not paying to be in break even. And we thought maybe more students would purchase it if they had more photos of their kid.
Yes.
And of the same in this area, high school would have their own book. So, Floyd Central would have the hardback book, Betsy Lane High School would have a hardback book, and Preston's Heart Hospital would have a.
And those would include your FCSI, your RLC.
And ATC.
Your, your ATCs, yeah.
So, and, I'm sorry. And the pictures, if you'll notice, the back of the book, like each senior would get a quarter of a page, instead of just a little snapshot. So, each senior would have the three photo. You'd have a larger one, and then two smaller ones. And then in the back, we would have given the yearbooks out.
About that.
This time, people can get in the graduation, uh.
Spring, spring, towards.
Spring towards, and so they would get it. That's the whole page, but it would be a quick ones at one point. They do the two pictures. And then the elementary schools would have the paperback one, which would be less expensive. And it's just certainly an option. What we're doing is not really, it's not working most of the time, not utilized.
It's, it's not working.
It's in this thing on this page here.
The.
They get all that.
There was one school after that, every time, talking to the yearbook. Yeah, so with that being said, I mean, this is an option to go with. Now, of course, every option, I have positives, every option, but I have negatives. Of course, you know, if you've got a kid going to two different schools, you're gonna have to buy two different books. But even if you bought those two books, it may only be three dollars more after you do everybody.
My question is, you got five thousand students. If you buy five of them, that's, that's on the average, what we sold, right?
Well, the pricing is based on what you buy.
Based on.
Well, like, it should have been fifty-seven dollars. And go up to about seventy-five dollars.
The percentage, yeah.
Or two hundred less, but, and that's correct.
Yes.
So, how much would this be?
That would be right around twenty-nine, there's a list up there.
Said it could be as little as twenty dollars, can only pay.
Yeah, and depending on if we sold ads, sold phones, tricks, things.
And, and the hardback, hardback would be?
Thirty-seven dollars.
And it would have allowed for more photos at the school.
Yeah, so, last year, I'll use Floyd Central, for example. Floyd Central had seventy-seven pages in the yearbook. They had the most, in school, because they had the most, you know, students. But they would actually be getting almost twenty-three more pages to help, you know, put their seniors, spread it out, get more events in there, get more pictures of our kids. And that's what we want, I mean, we want more pictures of our students.
I think that's over a hundred and twenty-five, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
Fifty-four pages.
Yeah, and, I mean, maybe if you look at Betsy Lane High School, they'll have it's four pages last year, so they get even more this year. It's just a way that we can spotlight our students and have more kids in our books. And it's just a way that our parents can. Yeah, I'll say, uh, cameras, it's one of the few cameras.
And she said we're the only school.
We're, we're the only school in Kentucky, where I think we're only two in the, in the country.
Yeah, she said they are not.
That's, that's.
So, maybe, we have a deep turn of words.
Although, that's for the ones we have, or anybody. Does anybody, if you could move on that back shelf up there for the yearbook? Looks like they're on the floor, there's.
Yeah, there's.
Somebody can bring them up there, just.
We have a deep turn of looks for the elementary school, high school, and middle school.
This would be the elementary, this would be just high school, right?
I know, high school.
And middle, this would be middle and.
One of the.
This would be KA.
And we used to do, we used to do. Yeah, so this is not something.
I've got all mine upstairs on the floor, trying to find.
Yeah, I think that's when we sold it, it was about seventy-seven. Yeah, definitely. And I mean, it's, it's, it's a good thing, it's, it's something that the kids can have, some, you know, something that parents can have, I think it's very obvious. But, you know, of course, we know it's younger. If you're all not happy with that, I mean, so.
Did they offer a digital version of it too?
I believe they did, you'll have to, I don't know if they offered on every classroom, but they do offer a digital version, yeah. It, yeah, it could be, even if, even if we could.
I see that picture.
Yeah, buy me something, we'll get to it, so. But I will, I will sit down now, but thank you all for listening to this, and just, yes, sir.
If I'm gonna ask for it, you said, we, we lost fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars on annual last.
It's very difficult, so I, I don't have the man in front of me.
We are paying.
Because if, if we sold, approximately four hundred and nine, and one seven hundred review. And that, that number of. That number of yearbooks is not something we chose, that's something, that is the minimum that, that was said, to, to buy that big of a yearbook, to make sure that it's profitable that we are.
And we have samples you can take back there, we'll try to sell those, maybe at discount price.
Yeah, we may, we've sold quite a bit. Yes, and what, what's the.
Five, five hundred.
Coming up, the new, still up there?
Yes, let's go, so.
We're losing that kind of money.
It's, it's insane.
It's hard to say, but we may have.
I thought we was trying to make a difference, yeah.
I mean, we can try, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But at least we're trying to make a difference, and we're trying to help the citizens. What matter trial?
I agree.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, two to A, we see, but one county does security best practice, let's pray it's passed.
You don't want most of this around the table, it's your life. So, this is one of the things that, that we do every year, as part of requirements for KDE, is kind of go over a little bit of what we do here in the district and across the state as far as that security. Today's presentation, we're gonna hit on the four big, big points of what KDE recommends and what we do before we do anything else. That, that first point will be the physical security. As you, as we do here and we do across the state, we always try to restrict our server network areas to only authorized staff. So, there's only certain people of each district, and we, as a district, have access to our servers that are here on our network. One of the reasons for this is to protect that equipment from any thefts, vandalism, vandalism, disasters, spills, any power surges. We have stuff in place for power surges, we have stuff in place for natural disasters with battery backups, with, with generators, all of them to keep things up and running in case of an emergency. As I say, all of our facilities, the majority of them all have a generator. All of our network closets are climate controlled, and all of our buildings have emergency plans.
Don't be the interrupter for a local emergency generator. I'm sure you've been to test them before.
Yeah, that's, uh, something Kevin, I know there's a, so they're tested on a regular basis by, by third-party.
I didn't mean interrupt.
How many schools do we have without us now? Most of them do.
I don't think I have one.
Days.
Uh, the second of the four is, uh, I want to talk about the servers. Uh, so over, over the last eight to nine years, we've significantly reduced the servers we house here in the district. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the reasons is, is security leads. Um, the more servers you have in the district, the more opportunities you're gonna get for, for security risk and com, having the compromises. Uh, so especially if you have a server that they call, that's, that's called the face forty, which means that people from outside our network can access it. Uh, when, when I first started, for example, in two thousand eleven, we had about fifteen servers in the district that you could access from outside, uh, our network. So, if I was sitting at the house, I could type in a URL and see a server here in the district.
What is, what is D M Z and V S? What, what's the meaning of that?
D M Z is what we consider our network operations center. Uh, so that's actually housed on the other side of that wall there, in, uh, one of our, uh, rooms back here in our office. Uh, so that, that's the hub for the district. So, all the, all the data, all the infrastructure runs through that room back there behind this, uh, just on the other side of that wall. So, everything's centrally located. Uh, it's kind of like a, kind of like a spiral we have. Everything starts here and goes out to our schools. All of our schools are connected back to this single building.
Thank you.
Do you have any, like, Prestonburg High School?
No, uh, as far as where we were at, uh, we moved all that up here when, when we moved here back in two twenty twenty. Uh, so like I said, servers, we would significantly reduce those. Uh, now the servers we do have left, you know, we apply always the third-party methods on a regular basis. Uh, we only use those servers for intended purposes. Uh, the ones we do have is, uh, storage servers. We have our video servers. We have our servers that control our access control. Uh, most of that stuff is provided function in the service that we have here in the district. Uh, so we don't house here at any, we used to. And, uh, Dr. Barry, I touched on that. We don't have any public-facing servers, uh, in our block right here anymore. So, most of that stuff's all moved to the cloud now, so nothing is public-facing here anymore. Uh, we do review those logs on a regular basis. Uh, that's not, that's not so exciting, but we do review desktop security. Uh, so this is the thing that a lot of districts are having to look at here within the next year. And, uh, I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a second. But, uh, we all, we are a Windows district, so we're a Microsoft district. Uh, we keep that, uh, patched and updated on a regular basis. Antivirus, it's a big thing that a lot of, every district in the state of Kentucky has to address, uh, by June thirty of the next year. Uh, we, we train users on a regular basis, uh, try not to open attachments from unknown senders. Don't click on emails, uh, that look suspicious. Uh, never send your username and password in an email. Uh, all those are not, not a good idea to do. So, access and accounts is the last of the four. Uh, we have systems in place to disable, remove, uh, staff accounts on an automated basis. So, uh, staff members leave the district, uh, once they're made inactive in our finance system, that account gets disabled. Uh, and the reason for that, you don't only scale accounts up, uh, that just gives opportunity for accounts to get, uh, compromised. Uh, periodically review those log and disable accounts, uh, audit high-privileged groups. So, what that means is anybody with, uh, permissions to access personal data, uh, you know, or empty campus or finance system, it limits those to only the people that need it. Have strong password policy, so our did fifteen-character password policy, uh, fifteen-character minimum, uh, that has to change every hundred and eighty days.
Oh, yes, it's so hard to remember the password. Because see, my Wi-Fi password, it's about twelve words. I have to picture it. If you ask me, I don't remember even.
So, you can tell people, most of that is, please don't take a post-it note and stick your password on your phone.
You, 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 you have the password, pick one day, even I don't remember one I have. It's like Jay, always going to the.
Uh, so that's, that's a difference. Uh, as I said, passwords change regularly. Uh, we're always telling people, don't send emails or documents that contain personal information unless it's to something like a doctor's office or somebody in the state, uh, that you're having to send that to. Uh, never share your password. Always be aware of opening email links, uh, even if you see an email, if it's not from somebody you know. We always tell people, be aware of what you're opening, look at it, make sure it looks legit. If you always have any questions, you always call us. Uh, never share your personal information online, not just here in the district, but that goes, uh, for yourself at home on your personal accounts. Uh, do not use student, uh, S S I Ds in email as identifiers. Uh, it may not be the, the student's social security number, that S S I D, the empty campus ID, their state ID is, uh, particular for them, it's specific for them, and we treat that just like a function security number. And the final thing here on this page is, if you put your board, we always ask people to put their board email address on their cell phone and make sure that cell phone has a passcode on it. Don't leave it where anybody can just walk up and grab your cell phone and, and use your email without having to buy any kind of password either.
Yeah, I give copy of all my password on my cell phone.
And even more important, to have a passcode on that.
I have a six password for different things, so I always give you those, I don't remember.
Uh, so, so what else are we doing aside from what the state recommends? Uh, in the last three or four years, we've invested a lot of money in cybersecurity and user security here in the district. And one of those big partners that we have is Fortinet. And I don't know if anybody that, that's seen Fortinet, they actually provide security for the federal government. So, Fortinet's in every federal building in the United States. Uh, they're also in this building right here. Uh, they provide our own advanced firewall and security protocols for the district. Uh, there's a lot to that, uh, but it's, it's a great, great service. And, uh, we've seen a lot of things over the last few years since we've added in that, that is blocked, so it's real interesting.
That's what I was getting ready to ask. For instance, say I tried to get in, would you know that somebody's tried to get in?
Yeah, so we on a regular basis, it, it, it's kind of crazy to see something logged. But we have probably anywhere from two to five thousand attempts a day from other countries on accounts in our district. So, and, and you can see that pretty easily with, with the systems we have. But it, just, just a district here in Kentucky, you know, I have numbers like that. You can imagine what it's like for, uh, big businesses and individuals. Uh, we, another thing we do is, uh, weekly vulnerability scans through the Department of Homeland Security. Uh, they'll email me weekly, uh, with a vul, vulnerability scan of our network here in the, in the district. What it's seeing coming in, what it's seeing going out. Uh, they send that to me on a regular basis, and I read it for that, is, uh, when, if you have a compromised device in the district, uh, you're gonna see unusual things. And, uh, those reports help point us in the direction if we see something that's unusual. Uh, we also provide what's called A five licensing to all of our staff members in the district that have access to personal information. So, majority of the people in this building, for example, all access I C and have some form of admin rights. Uh, they're in fin, in units in our fi, our finance department. All those things, we have added security on those accounts, uh, to help keep those protected. Uh, we do have multi-factor authentication for every employee in the district, uh, as well on top of that. And, uh, the last couple of things here is a couple of safe rollouts we got going out. Uh, one's getting ready to start called the security protection system. Uh, so that's gonna change the, uh, user automation system and the staff student automation system for every school district in the state of Kentucky. It's gonna change our multi-factor authentication, and, uh, it's gonna make sure that we're narrowing down and providing good protection on all of our accounts in the district. And the one I touched on, the last one I talked about, um, something we have to look at by June thirty of this, next year is, uh, K D E no longer providing antivirus software to ever, to all districts in the state of Kentucky. Uh, so for twenty-plus years, uh, antivirus software on all of our devices has been provided by the state. Uh, well, that's no longer the case after this year. So, now it's gonna be up to the district, uh, to pick that solution and, and pay for that cost. Uh, so I've got right now a couple of vendors in line to do a demo on. Uh, we're going to try to look at about four or five. Three of them is a nationwide vendor, one of them is Fortinet that's already here in the district. Uh, but we're trying to narrow down, we're gonna bring something over here, and I'm hoping by Christmas, uh, we're gonna narrow down that so we can get a good head start on that, on picking what we're gonna do to protect our devices here in the district. Uh, I'll be able to roll that out by June thirty.
What's the anticipated cost?
Uh, so a couple, a couple that I've looked at so far is anywhere from like eight to ten dollar per device. So, you're, or we probably got around five hundred devices that are just Windows in the district. That, that's only included our Chromebook, so it's only Windows devices. Uh, so just about, I've looked at right now, so I've got about eight or ten per device. But I'm real early, I'm just looking to. Uh, I've looked at some data resources, if anybody wants to see those links. So, K D E has a, has a website, the, the legislature has a website that breaks down all these K R Ss and requirements for some of this stuff that every district has to have. So, I have that if anybody wants to see that. And, uh, if I have any questions that I have, that's.
Is, uh, K D E to a reason for not allowing, thanks for talking to me.
Uh, not really, you know, other than, other than, uh, everybody not, legislature type nowadays and and they're trying to still pay for any of the stuff like empty campus and the things that we have to have, our, our internet. So, everybody pay for the internet of forever district in the state of Kentucky. Uh, so I guess we're trying to make sure that they get the important stuff, uh, to keep us up and running. They didn't give us security.
Did we pick empty campus up this year?
No.
All seven, just paid a possible for next year.
They actually picked, well, I don't think we ended up going with the online registration, but they was gonna not cover that. But they come back in the last month and said they lost. But we ended up not using it, so it didn't matter.
I have a question. If you don't send the password, what about the email? You can send, like a lot of people call, send me of this person email, this person email, whatever.
You mean if they send you a password?
Email, sending the email.
Well, well, we recommend not to send passwords in the email, uh, just, just because that account can be compromised. And that, that's not, not a good idea to do that. Uh, it's always a good idea for any account, no matter if you're working here in the district, if you're, uh, your personal banking account, your personal, uh, streaming, video streaming account should have some form of multi-factor on it. Uh, what that means is, when you log into it, it makes you, it sends you a text, it sends you a notification that I have, that you have to approve that sign in. And, uh, we recommend it for everything, just because nowadays everybody's getting some compromised, and it's real easy to do.
A lot of hacking, huh?
Yep, it's a full-time job, it's just a set management security, and now that you can do it by. Appreciate it, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any comments to the board? Let's look to Flip Boy first. Uh, do you have a really good, anything else?
Well, there is in my, my, for somebody. Good evening, everybody, and I'm glad to be with you. Thank you for letting me speak for E C E A. Um, we met this week, or last week, and then we were talking about the P D Academy and how we thought it was really smooth. And we, uh, appreciate the extra time we got on our classrooms because of the way we've done this year. And, uh, here at Word Radio, it's really good. And S E A provided breakfast for everybody in the first eight months of the year. We were planning to have a district-wide unity day, the vague for ball break. I encourage all members to wear their, uh, S E A shirts, and I'll be attending the regional meeting for E K E A during our ball break. And I don't know how much else to share, it's been kind of a long week, so, uh, it's good to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, how are you?
How are you? So, that's about.
Oh, you did it for you. Any other comments, members of the board?
Yeah. Uh. I, I'm not the speaker of the booth. Couple of things I want to say. First off, I wish this district could get back to caring about kids. I first took over as board member, I had black beard. Uh, I think we have a superintendent down that's got kids in her. And I'll explain where I come. We had a meeting, I don't know what was it, two and a half weeks ago, somewhere around there.
Oh, no, no.
The one about the gym with Ross Teron.
Okay, gym, yes.
First off, we had a meeting, and I was just up here. Ross Teron showed up. We met over at the gym. Uh, I don't know any dollar figure, a dollar amount. This is not how it used to be at this school. Talked about what they're gonna do to the gym floor, you know, the gym roof and this and the floor and that, this over here. We, we agreed on that, but they brought up this. They were saying that we needed a new room. New, how many was it, eight?
Yeah, there's these units on top.
Six units on top. I think it was pretty good in here. Uh, they were talking about the stuff outside, and a lot of people in this room right here went to school here. My dad was a maintenance man, and I remember him telling, I, I hope this. All of Buckets Black Mania, often in the room. They talked about replacing outside these panels. Now, in the past, yeah, let's do it. Do you know what this woman right here said? A lot of people don't know this. He said, my question is, how would this doing this to this building benefit our kids? And both of my hairs on the back of my neck, that absolutely ran a couple of chill bumps all over. It's not been about the kids. It's been about the stuff. And I just want to thank you. Finally, finally, somebody that, and I'm not talking about anybody else. You guys, you've got a heavy routine. And I'm, and I, I see light at the end of the tunnel. And I'm just typical of them. These guys has been here for a long time, and this guy right here has. And, and the changes that I'm seeing and hearing, I've heard, and they'll always have our haters, but I've heard nothing but good stories. And I think, I think you deserve a round of applause. It's, and I appreciate it.
I don't, might have gotten in trouble there, and I just know they were having a heating and cooling issue back there.
Oh.
It was like, like both I guys just spent a lot. It was like a million dollars to fix the top of this. And I think it's like, this ceiling, it's too much, this building, to fix the roof.
You know, they were, they were gonna go put all new stuff outside, and she said, well, try to find some metal that'll match. Don't match, make it, if you can't find the metal, who would it? But that's not the way it's been.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
See ya. All right, number four, actions, special reports. Tom Root was gonna give us the quarterly activities report today, last week.
He said he wouldn't be here tonight.
Maybe next morning.
Yeah, so we're all the same, so you'll see then.
And superintendent's report, we've already received that, you've got the good job reporting to us, uh, weekly most time.
Well, about seventy-two minutes, it's a.
Lovely also, so let's, I'll fetch you on that also. Uh, number five, action, special reports. I'll lead a motion to a trip five A through five N. Any questions on any of those?
I do.
Okay.
You say.
He said.
Oh, okay, okay.
He made a motion, that's my doctor checking. He played the most, that's, uh, Dr. Chad's seconds, force.
Yes.
Yeah.
In, yes, here about Jase Motion passes. All right, we have already, uh, done your consent items, so, uh, all the way down to number seven, as you take the session, I, I think we did an executive session today, and we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Make some, good, good, each second, about.
No. Me, no, me, say. Yes.